I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a moment of silence for Mr. Heaton and Ms. Hyatt, both very community-minded, active community leaders in our town? May their memories be eternal.
James, number one.
Good evening, Town Council members, Mayor, general public. I'm here to update your SCBA compressor that's a self-contained breathing apparatus compressor. I'm very happy to say that last week we finally got it up and running. It's been a year-long project, but that is now up and running. We passed all of our NFPA and OSHA regulations, so that's up and running. So I know you've been talking about several different budget items tonight, and this has a little bit of flow into that as well. The funding for the air compressor was granted to us in 2017 to 2018's budget. It was moved by the Mayor, Town Council Board of Finance, and ultimately approved by the townspeople during the referendum in May of 2017. The town allocated $50,000 for this compressor in the Waterwich Hose Company Number Two budget. In October of 2017, Waterwich was notified that we actually received an AFG grant for this project. Some of the council members are new, and some of the other people in the general public do not necessarily know, we did receive this particular grant. It was supposed to be somewhere in the neighborhood of a 10% match into the town of New Milford. As you're well aware, with the federal government, they shift things around as to what they should think you should pay versus actual costs in terms of what your 10% allocation is. With this and our setup requirements, we used about $10,000 out of that $50,000 that was there. The remaining $40,000 that is not being used will remain as unspent funds to the town of New Milford. Waterwich Hose Company Number Two does not look to transfer money in between or among line items that we get approved by the Town Council. I'd like very much to thank the members of the community for their support in this. I'd also like to thank our grant writer, David Collin-Besk, who's a member of the Fire Department, as well as the past chief and the past officers that started this project that allows me to stand up here today and say thank you very much. It's now up, running, and that's one project off the list. And again, I think it's a great thing that we are fiscally responsible down at the Fire Department. We go out, we go out for all the grants that we can get. In this particular case, it becomes a windfall of an 80% reduction in the funds that the town of New Milford thought they would be spending on this one particular allocated item. Thank you very much, and you have a wonderful evening.
Could you just say your name?
My name is James Furlough. I'm the chief of Waterwich Hose Company Number Two, New Milford, Connecticut.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Steve.
Good evening, Town Council, Mayor, community. My name is Steve Clugie. I'm the most recent delegate to the Canadawood Lake Authority, approved by you guys in January, and now having been on the Lake Authority for six months, I thought it would be a good idea to come and just tell you briefly some of the things that I've done as a volunteer and some of the things I've seen happening with the Lake Authority, which obviously you guys support. I've been a lifelong summer resident of New Milford and for the last seven years a permanent resident. I have a small home up on Canadawood Lake, up off Canadawood Lake Road North. So since I started attending those meetings, I've also gotten involved with the Lake Authority on some of their outreach and some of the science that they're doing on the lake there. And I'm just going to tell you quickly what I've done and what I've seen. My background, I'm a geologist, an educator. My background is hard science, and so I've enjoyed getting to see that aspect of the Lake Authority being done. One of the first things I did was sinus night at the Sherman School, elementary school kids. Lake Authority had pretty much the most popular exhibit there, this little environmental thing. Other things that I've done, I've been out on the lake twice now, sampling the lake. And the sampling that we do, the scientific sampling of the lake is extensive. It takes a full half-day on the water when you know what you're doing, just to collect samples, and they go off to the lab. And the things that we've been doing are things, doing profiles down through the water column, temperature profiles, measuring dissolved oxygen, measuring ions, measuring the presence of cyanobacteria, which people call "blue-green algae." We've been doing that, monitoring that, and watching that, and then looking at it over time and at different places in the lake. Very interesting to me to see, number one, how thorough the science is, how carefully it's being done, and then the analysis of it and what it tells you, and I'll tell you in a second about that. After the big storm, the Lake Authority was out for two days clearing debris out of the lake, branches out of the lake. I accompanied the, I was on the workboat one day doing that, and we spent the whole day scouring the shoreline, finding derelict boats, derelict docks, big branches and stuff like that. We were picking all that stuff up, and there was two full days of that going on there. I haven't been out with the Lake Patrol yet, but they actually encouraged us to tour with them one day so we could see what they do, and they said, "Come on a weekend." You guys have heard about the sterile grass carp and the milfoil thing. Those grass carp were put in, there's about, I have to be careful here, but about 7,500. We're at what we think we need for, to control that milfoil. They were tagged, several of them were tagged with little radio beacons, and those radio beacons are still working, and here's what we found. We found that the fish have moved throughout the lake. They cleared out the Sherman, the little Sherman Bay there. You can drive through there with your boat. Last summer, you could drive through with your boat without fouling the prop. So they're working. In places where the carp have removed the weeds, there are now native species coming back into there, native plants coming back in there, so they're actually making the lake healthier. There was a whole thing about New Milford got kind of stiff in that whole thing because the fish were little, they didn't want to go through the spillway. They get big fast. They get big fast, and a week and a half ago, one of the tagged fish was discovered right down by the spillway. So they're in the New Milford Bay now, those fish are moving around. So that's been a kind of a, it looks like a successful thing, and it's just getting started. Those fish are just starting to eat now, so that's kind of a cool thing.
Steve, you have a minute, please.
I beg your pardon, you have a minute.
Okay, so one minute. So here's what I'm going to tell you. As we look at Canadawood Lake, we see that Canadawood Lake is being affected by warming climate, and that's changing some of the way the lake stratifies, where different things live in the lake, how dissolved oxygen works, but, and this was really what I wanted to say to you, we have a handle on that, we're looking at that, and there will be recommendations coming from that data. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Steve.
Lucy. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, I present the Council.
Can you state your name, please, and address?
Lucy Wildrick, 6th South Main Street. And I gave these comments to the Town Facilities Utilization Committee last week, but I wanted to share them with you as well. I have read recently about the potential sale of the East Street School property for private residential development. I'm not opposed to more residential downtown. I live downtown. I think it's a great place to live, and I believe that downtown will become livelier as a result of having more residents within walking distance of all its amenities. I do have a concern, though, if the plan is to empty the buildings, the building of its current municipal offices and services and move those employees and those they serve away from downtown. In my work as a developer and consultant on mixed-use projects in downtown areas, I can tell you that we value towns that have municipal offices within the downtown district. One nearby example is Blueback Square in West Hartford that I developed with my partners. One compelling reason we chose to go forward with that rather risky redevelopment of deteriorated sites near the downtown, near the town center, was the presence of municipal services, the library, town hall, and the police station in the immediate vicinity. Why? They act as powerful anchors. They bring people, both employees and customers, to the downtown day in and day out, week in and week out, throughout the year. Even though those visiting the offices on a given day may not have the time or inclination to stop into the coffee shop, restaurants, or shops, they see those assets and will remember them. It puts the downtown on their mental map of places they are familiar with and are comfortable returning to. Plus, municipal offices are not dependent on economic cycles, as many businesses are, and are reliably active centers in the community. Last summer, the Riverfront Revitalization Committee, of which I'm a member, was lucky enough to have a variety of speakers come to our sessions to educate us on a number of issues that pertain to the riverfront downtown and its redevelopment. One in particular spoke to three types of assets that are highly desirable in a downtown because of their function as anchors: Eds, Meds, and Feds. That's acute and memorable shorthand for educational institutions, medical services, and government offices. All three are reliable generators of foot traffic and visitors, in addition to employing solid numbers of people. New Milford has the hospital, of course, and municipal offices, or light on educational institutions. The key is keeping those uses in the downtown area. When separated out by the highway, the positive impact on the vitality of downtown is lost. This is not just anecdotal information or conjecture on my part. A 2010 article by Professor Laura Yidi, and I apologize for mispronouncing, of Ball State University says in part, "Retaining and expanding the location of civic and cultural buildings in the downtown should be the fourth prong in downtown revitalization." He goes on, "Public buildings are a stronger and more significant presence in the downtowns of small communities than in large cities." And he concludes, "Communities that capitalize on and promote such civic activity in the downtown will remain healthy." There are also studies out there that quantify the value of government services in a downtown. The 2005 study in Wisconsin revealed that towns with government offices downtown, when compared with those that did not, had 8.4% more businesses, 7.4% more retail, and 25% more professional and technical businesses downtown. When the plan to move some of the town offices out to Pettibone was formed several years ago, I was new to the community and not fully educated on the issues associated with that plan, so I did not weigh in publicly. In private conversations, however, I did voice my concern that moving town offices and services out of downtown was not a good idea because it would sap downtown of the reliable vitality associated with municipal offices. It turns out, I heard recently, that this is exactly-
Lucy, you have a minute, please.
No problem. It turns out, I heard recently, that this is exactly what has happened. Business owners downtown have felt the loss of the town departments that have been moved. This is all a really long way to say, if and when you sell the East Street School or any other downtown municipal properties for private development, do everything within your power to relocate those town services right here in downtown. The cash infusion of the sale of a building is a one-time benefit that should be weighed very carefully against the long-term loss of vitality and value in the downtown as a whole. New residents are great, but they don't come close to having the year-in, year-out impact of town services in maintaining the vitality and viability of the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want my notes here?
Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, that's Commander Collin-Besk, please.
Thank you.
Joseph Fallon, 17 Caldwell Lane, New Milford. I'm here and I'm going to speak as a parent of a student at New Milford High School. The Board of Education just had to make reductions to their budget in an approximate amount of $1.2 million. I'll put it this way, a reduction in their requested increase of $1.2 million, and that was done the other day. However, there are several factors that concern me, and I'd like this council to know about it, for myself as a parent. There are three in particular: pay-to-play, parking fees, and AP exams. Our, the budget for the Board of Education was $63 million, and the Board of Education determined that one of the better ways to balance that budget was to increase fees for pay-to-play, parking, and AP exams. Students will get one AP exam paid for by school, any others, you will not. Most students take more than one AP class, that's the easy one. Parking fees are going to go up from $150 to $225 a year for students. Most parents require their students to pay that fee, but it's a large amount for a student to park on campus. But most important is pay-to-play. I think many of you have known me for a lot of years, and I've been anti-pay-to-play my entire life in this town, of 15 years that I've lived here. Public schools should not be charging students to play sports. The schools advocate fitness, health, good eating, and yet they charge you to exercise, and that's what that is. Particularly, the Board of Education singles out athletes, because those are the only after-school programs that are being charged, not the clubs, the band, they'll say, is part of an academic program, but the cheerleaders, everyone else pays to play sports there. And the fact that, in total, the offsets were $110,000 for pay-to-play, another $30,000 for parking permits, and the AP exams, I don't know if they stopped paying for additional exams for students, but right there in and of itself is $140,000 in reductions that the Board of Education did at the expense of the children and their parents. That's $140,000 out of $63 million. There were recommendations for other reductions, but they didn't go through. Our budget is put together, a reduction has been made, but I find it incredibly tragic that the students have to pay to play sports in this town. I think it sets a bad example for this community. I think if we, as a community, as a town, can't find $110,000 to cover the cost of what the students are now going to pay, and I was quoted in the paper, we are balancing that school budget on the backs of our students, our children. I think that's a tragic statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Dan Hubler, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. Next, moving to the approval of the prior minutes.
I have a motion to approve the special Town Council meeting minutes, June 7, 2018.
Any discussion?
I have some corrections. Rather than a step in, I text them apart. Do I need to read these in for the record as well? Yeah, okay. So page three, paragraph five. Mrs. Heda stated she's okay with getting the budget as close as possible. The town has done their work. The Board of Education needs to have their feet held to the fire. The residents will not like a 3.67% increase. I watched the meeting video to get the statement. Ms. Heda stated she was okay with getting the budget as close as Town Council can and using a historical amount of unassigned. It is the right responsibility. If Town Council gets into the budgetary cycle and we find revenues are cut again, then dip into the unassigned. But it isn't as if the Town Council didn't try to reduce the amount of unassigned used during these meetings. On the education side, Ms. Heda made phone calls to taxpayers. They were picked at random, and feedback from the taxpayers was clear, the town had done their work, the Board of Education has not. The taxpayers told her, quote, "Please, please hold their feet to the fire," unquote. While she stated she appreciates the passion on both sides, she does not like the 3.67% tax increase, it is too high. The people she spoke to that are on fixed incomes will find that magnitude of increase problematic. That's number one, I've got a few more. Page three, paragraph seven, Ms. Heda moved to amend the motion, was actually, the motion was made by Mr. Semansky. Page three, paragraph eight, Ms. Heda, in reviewing previous meeting minutes, cited the interest income was $300,000 with a budget amount of $180,000. The correction, Ms. Heda, in reviewing previous meeting minutes, cited the interest income and other revenue for '17, '18 was much higher than the budgeted amount due to a different investment profile initiated by Mr. Osipau. She stated that when you look at the amount in the '18, '19 budget, we only have $180,000. She asked Mr. Osipau if there was more money possible than budgeted in that category. Mr. Osipau replied that because of rising interest rates and a more aggressive investment policy, as of the end of May, the town had realized $400,000 in interest income, and that there is an opportunity to increase the revenue line for '18 and '19. Page four, paragraph three, $240,000 in revenues. The correction, the statement was actually $140,000 to $180,000 in revenues. Page five, second paragraph, the motion was noted as $38,59,316, and was actually $39,59,316. And last, page five, paragraph five, Ms. Heda commented on the surprise in that statement. The correction, Ms. Heda stated her surprise during the budgetary process that various groups came before the Town Council requesting vehicle and equipment replacement and had provided no details. In any other municipality, they would present the age of the vehicle or equipment, maintenance costs, mileage, et cetera, but none of that had been provided. She said she contacted the fire teams but did not receive a returned phone call. She said that she did not understand how the Town Council could not have good processes in place to make good decisions, and that to make good decisions on behalf of the taxpayer, the Town Council needs to be more stringent in its business acumen.
That came from the video?
That came from the video. Yep. I stuck just to my stuff.
Are we good with the revisions? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Move to approve the regular Town Council meeting minutes of June 11, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have some corrections. Again, stepping. All right. Page four, paragraph six, the sentence beginning, "Ms. Heda asked how many days." The correction is, "Ms. Heda asked of this list in Exhibit 5.4 how many had given permission." This is with regards to easements. Ms. Heda had reviewed the Viking River Trail Committee meeting minutes, and Lisa Arumson brought the easement issue up in one of the very first meetings. Mr. Shield, Mr. Shil? Mr. Shield said that they were not charged with assisting with the acquisition of easements. He stated that was "for the next phase," and we know where the opinions lie, both in quotations. He said, "Of our sources, happy to work with the town, but Housatonic Avenue owners are not going to want to work with you. This is where phasing comes in. This is a design sequence, not a construction sequence." He noted that "that state likes connectivity of a trail system," and that "Benton still was teed up, soft trails and sheros connected to Brookfield, slow hanging fruit. There's lots to consider in the sequencing." Page four, paragraph nine, "Ms. Heda felt," correction, "Ms. Heda asked Mr. Shield what was the next best alternative, what options were considered to get around these very difficult sections where easements might not be granted. She stated that she loved the idea of the Viking River Trail for tourism and quality of life for residents. The trail is great, and we're going to do something for us in New Milford, but if we don't have a plan for the difficult sections," she said, "it's hard to adopt this particular plan. Mr. Shield said that if you start in the south, you just go as far as you can, stop the trail, and leave the gap until that easement issue is solved. Mr. Shield went on to say that you could also extend the Youngsville Path to Helen Marks Park, since the Housatonic Avenue is going to be difficult, and come through Wannabe Island and stop again. He continued to say that Housatonic Avenue will take a long time, and that you will not have connectivity until those easements are worked out." Page five, paragraph four, "Ms. Heda asked if any market research," correction, "Ms. Heda said she understood they did the design before getting public input. Now that the design is done, she asked if market research had been done. She stated, 'We can all have our opinions, but we need to talk to the people that are going to hopefully use this trail.' Mr. O'Brien said they had not done any yet, and they are only a group of five volunteers." Last but not least, page five, paragraph six, "Ms. Heda asked if the committee were to pick sections, which ones are the most economically attractive, bring people downtown, and will give us the biggest bang for our buck." She asked Mr. Shield which ones he would go after of the easiest and the most cost-effective. And his reply is in the meeting minutes.
Any other discussion or amendments to the minutes? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, we're moving on to the Mayor's remarks. First, as we did for our prayer, is in honor of Mr. John Heaton and Ms. Barbara Hyatt. Ms. Barbara Hyatt, for those that didn't know her, she was a voter registrar. She was a member of the Daughters of American Revolution. She was a justice of the peace. She was a very community-minded member, and for those that knew her, knew that she cared about our town, cared about our community, and was very passionate about that. May her memory be eternal. Mr. John Heaton, who passed, he was the former chairman of the Sewer Commission. He volunteered for United Way, Northville Fire Department. He was part of the Booster Club of New Milford High School. He was the founder and chairman of Nestle's Credit Union. He, as well, was very community-minded, civic-minded, family man. He was a very important part of our community, as we all are, and may his memory be eternal. Also like to congratulate the New Milford Class of 2018. They've now graduated. For those that next year get an opportunity to check the grad party that's at the high school, it is absolutely amazing. They hold an open house, so you get a chance to look at what they do for our children for that night, you get a chance to kind of take a look at what they do. Hundreds of volunteers it takes, hundreds of man-hours. Just, it was an honor to go there, to see that, to see our community pulling together as they did for this event to keep our children safe. So I thank Olga Rela and all of the volunteers for their time and their efforts. They're already planning for next year's grad party. Also, would like to thank the United Way for their day of action. So if you go up to the senior center, you go up to the children's center, you look around town, Harburg Park, a lot of grounds work was done, all at no cost, all done by the community and businesses to better our town. So I'd like to thank the United Way for their day of action. Also, as we know, the budget passed, third referendum. I thank all the voters that did come out to give the town direction as to where we're going, starting July 1, which is the town's new budget year. I also want to thank all of the registrars, the both registrars, and all the volunteers who manned the polls for three times. Thank you for your efforts, and thank you for allowing us, as citizens, to vote each and every time. As we move on to our next voting, which will be in November for our gubernatorial as well as our state elections, please be reminding your vote is very important. As it is with any election, any budget vote, your voice is important. Please come out to the polls. I'd also like to give you a kind of an update on a few things that are happening in town. First, the town of New Milford received a $170,000 bar grant for riverfront revitalization. I'd like to thank the Riverfront Revitalization Committee, Kathy Castaneda, and former Mayor Leva Furman for their efforts. Kathy, Mayor Furman, and myself went up to Hartford to make the pitch to the Department of Economic Development. There were other towns that competed, and we were very fortunate and honored to be part of the grant process. So these monies will be used to begin for us to plan, in a proper way, downtown revitalization, which is going to help us with jobs, businesses, and opportunities, especially for our town and our taxpayers, and our citizens as well. Next, I'd also like to let you know that we've been meeting the fire marshal, the police department, the firemen, and the ambulance, all on emergency management training, both for storms as we've had now. We've taken best practices and continue to refine them, as well as if there's any major incidents that would happen, both in the schools and in private sector. We continue to work together with the Board of Ed, with our police, with our fire, with our ambulance, and with other entities such as CERT to make sure- our ambulance, and with other entities such as CERT to make sure that we are prepared for these events. I'll continue to fill you in during the course of the summer as we're doing different trial runs, practices, and scenarios. So I thank all those departments for volunteering as they do and really making our planning process a better one. Next, I'd like to let you know that we've now partnered with Savings Bank of Danbury and Webster Bank to allow taxpayers to go to their New Milford branches and pay property taxes online. I'd like to thank, or actually at the branch, I'd like to thank Nancy McGavitt, our tax collector, for helping put this endeavor in place, so now there's more of a convenience for our taxpayers if they need to make their payments, they can make them there at the branch, branches. Next, I'd like to talk to you about the roads. So we've all known about our road conditions. We've known that we need to fix the roads and we're doing that. I'd like to let you know that one of our, two of our major roads for major reconstruction, Long Mountain and Squirehead Roads bids are out. Also, our banned roads that we're looking to do this summer as well, will be going out to bid next week, which will be Mill and Phil they call. Construction will begin in August. Also to let you know, there's bridge work being done on Mill Street. Town Farm Road, an update, as I've had some of the public ask, why had roadwork been stopped there? Roadworks were stopped due to the fact that we had a microburst, as we all know, in southern New Milford, so we had to reassess our efforts, move our manpower to continue to clean up the debris in our southern sector. The debris is almost completed. You'll begin to see tree work being completed on Town Farm Road next week. The following week, our DPW crew will then begin to continue to work on the process of Town Farm Road. Also, there's been a lot of conjecture on the rotary, that is, on Still River. It's continuing to move forward with state funding. I spoke with our DPW director, Mike Zarba, today to reiterate concerns of our public as for truck traffic and trucks being able to move through the rotary. I was assured that they would be. We're going to continue to monitor those efforts and make sure that those impacted, as of right now, as you can see, if you do happen to commute there, we have an officer there during commute times to move traffic in a faster way to kind of lessen the impact. The road is supposed to be completed in November and I will update you during each meeting as to where we are. Also, this Wednesday, 6:27, town attorney Matt Grimes will have another talk on municipal government. That's at 7:00 PM right here. One of the things that we heard from our taxpayers and our citizenry was, "I really would like to know more about town government, how town government works." We heard you. We're setting up these classes as we have to give you the opportunity to listen and to ask Attorney Grimes and also study yourselves how municipal government works. It's a very important process because municipal government impacts you more than anything else. Also, as you can see on our town council meeting tonight, we have some updates from some of our subcommittees and I'd like to thank them right away for their efforts. This is volunteers coming out, using their time, their talent, to make our town better. And that's what makes New Milford so absolutely special and I can only thank them so much. We'll continue to the council. I'll continue to bring more updates with different departments and subcommittees as we move forward. July 1st starts our new fiscal year. As I told our department heads today, that sets our new tone and our new year. We're going to continue to work hard for you, the taxpayer, and you, the citizen, to continue to do a better job, continue to work and streamline and be more efficient for you, the taxpayer, and you, the citizen. If you have any questions at all, please feel free to contact me at the office, 860-355-6010, or you can email me at pbass@newmilford.org. That's your office. Please come in, please let me know how you feel. This is our town together. Thank you. Next, I can have an update from our finance director. Greg?
Good evening, all. Now that the budget has passed, I've incorporated all the changes by line item into the town side of the budget. It is tied out and will be loaded later this week. I am waiting on the Board of Ed budget with their changes. I need them to incorporate their changes by line item before I can load their budget. Once that's done, I will print and distribute budgets, hopefully sometime after the beginning of the fiscal year. I'll put them in, they will all be in your mailboxes. The Board of Finance, as you know, set the mill rate last Wednesday and it is 28.17. Now the report on finances as of May 31st. May expenses year-to-date are 88.1% of budget, which includes encumbrances of $1,022,926. Excluding encumbrances, the town has expended 85.4% of budget, which is below where we should be at this time of year on a straight-line basis, or 91.6% of budget. Board of Ed has expended or encumbered 97.4% of their budget with $1,606,426 unexpended. Some of the outliers, as I've been telling you all along, include trash pickup, unemployment compensation, dispatchers overtime, winter overtime, non-winter overtime, recycling overtime, and telephones. I've addressed some of these accounts and others via year-end adjustments that you have before you. On the revenue side of the budget, I've been shaking the money tree and we're getting money in from the state. I've got money in from WPCA for their debt service and the ambulance came across with their debt service payment as well. Overall, revenues are at 94.1% of budget. Taxes are at 100.1% of budget. Parks, building, and town clerk fees, departments are running below budget. Town aid road funds have been received by the state. I was concerned about that, but they came across and we got $278,000, so we're good in that account. Interest income and low SIP are coming in both over budget. Low SIP because last year, the state stopped accepting applications from everybody and what they did is made those monies, carried those monies over, made those available this year, so we received more than what was actually in budget. Waste management account, approximately $200,000 of the waste management fund bond ladder investment matured in May and I transferred those funds along with idle cash in the sweep account back into the stiff account, which is currently earning 1.76%, whereas the sweep account was earning one-half of 1%. Little update on FEMA, the feds, as you know, have made a visit to access recent storm damage and we hope to qualify for FEMA funds to offset the costs incurred from this storm. Preliminary estimates from Public Works are between $120,000 and $150,000. These costs are not all-inclusive and are a work in progress. Once it becomes clear that we will receive funds, it's not clear that we are, we have to meet a certain threshold. By county, I believe they do it, you have to meet a threshold of $700,000. So it's not clear, but if it becomes clear that we'll receive them, I will accrue the revenue for year-end if it is imminent we are getting funds. I'm proposing to set up a grant fund, which is specifically dedicated to the accounting of grant funding, excluding what we currently receive from the state for bridges. This way, all future grant proceeds can be easily identified and quantified in a segregated fund. So if you want to know what we got at any particular time, it'll be in one central location, easily reported on. Any questions before we move on to the year-end adjustments and?
So one thing I'd like to tell the council is, I'd like to thank our department heads, I'd like to thank the finance department and everybody looking, as Greg has told you, about keeping an eagle eye on our expenditures. Because we're able to do that, that's a significant savings and a significant plus to our bottom line. I'd also like to thank, Greg, you guys looking at ways to aggressively look at our investments in a safe way, not in bond ladders or mortgage-backed securities, but doing it in a very stable way, which outproduced our budgetary investments. So when we look at both of our growth of our revenue in that respect and holding down our expenses, that really helped us during this particular year where we've had reduced state revenues. So I cannot thank our department heads enough, our employees that continue to monitor, cost savings as well, and our council and our board of finance. Greg?
Yes, Doug?
Hey, question. Greg, on the waste management, just to reiterate, you said there was, what's the balance on the waste management? Do you know?
Overall, 11.5, give or take approximately.
What are we expecting in October for payment?
2.7 million.
And you said you, from the old account, it was less than a half percent and we got it now at 1.76%.
1.76, that's what stiff is currently offering. And it's liquid. It's not tied up for any.
Not tied up in some. So already we're ahead of the game, less than a half percent as going up to 1.76.
Correct.
And you said that last year was $200,000 was the interest on that? Is that what, correct that I heard?
No, no, that's what, that's part of the investment that matured and I brought that money back into the stiff account.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
You have in your packet your year-end adjustments. If I can draw your attention to that page. What this does, the purpose of this is really to clean up some department accounts, so no one department is over budget in total. This is significantly less than last year. I'm talking about the $30,700. Last year, I believe that line was $116,000. I like to think it's good financial management, but little luck involved too, I'm sure. So as you can see, it's listed by department. Actually, I'm taking the money from contingency to cover all these overages and there's still a balance left over in contingency, whereas last year it was fully spent. So I think we've done a good job overall as managers in that respect. What you see in the police private duty, as you remember, we budget $50,000 on each side of the revenue and expenditure and I always do the truing up of that account. So what I'm proposing to do is take the money from the revenue side of the budget and transfer it into the expenditure side of the budget. So that one particular department's not over budget. And debt service, there's money that was put aside on the balance sheet. The new issues were budgeted at the true interest cost, whereas we pay the coupon rate on the budget, so that's the difference there. So this money's not affecting the budget whatsoever, it's coming off the balance sheet. It was an assignment of fund balance. So that's it for the year-end adjustments, if you have any questions. I guess you folks need to vote on it.
So Greg, when we're voting first for the year-end adjustments, we're taking the transfer from?
The transfer is coming from contingency. On the right-hand side of the ledger, you'll see where the money's coming from and the left-hand side of ledger is where the money's getting transferred to. And I'd like to note at the bottom, in case anything changes, you're also giving me the authority in aggregate to transfer up to $25,000 if some unforeseen occurrence arises and I need to true up any other account or accounts. That's pretty standard.
Is that what's happened in prior years?
Yes.
So the transfer org is 1098,000?
Yeah, that's a contingency account.
That's a contingency account?
Fifty-eight-nine, yes.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to transfer from account 1098000, object 58900 from contingency, $30,700.
The move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And next, we're going to go to the carried and forced. Greg?
Okay, what you have before you is the carried and forced requests from the departments. As you can see, the requests in total are about $120,000 less than last year. Some of it is coming from capital accounts that were unexpended and in addition to current carried and forced accounts that were not fully expended and are look to be carried next year as well. And these show up on the balance sheet. These are not a part of the budgetary process, if you will. This is really an assignment of fund balance is what's happening here. So actually, the assignment of fund balance is going from 531987 to 409274.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the finance directors' carried in force of 409,274.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any other questions for Greg tonight? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Next, as we have different subcommittees that we form, one of them that we did is the cemeteries group. Mr. Adam Holasty Kuhn had come up to my office and had expressed some concern that with the aging of our sextons and with some of our cemeteries that are, some are active, some are not active, if they're not upkept, the town then has to take care of them, which could be a future cost. So in speaking with our probate judge, Mario Landry, who's the head sexton, we had a, and have been having cemetery group meetings, so I asked Judge Landry to kindly come up and address the council as to where we are in the process. Judge?
Thank you, mayor and councilmen and women. Kind of losing my voice, not because I'm yelling and screaming and so excited about this project, but it was the grad party this weekend, you know, kind of get into that. It was a beautiful little weekend. It's one of those things where we all know the cemeteries are there and at some point we're all going to be there. And we've got a lot of cemeteries in the town of New Milford and a lot of them have a lot of history and some of them are actually at the point where they're no longer able to have people interve there, but we still have the cemeteries and we have to take care of them. A lot of times if somebody is buried in a place, their expectation is that they're going to be there and it's going to be kept up for eternity. We're trying to make sure that that's still a possibility because at some point, there are some cemeteries that do wind up going defunct or, for lack of a better word, bankrupt in a sense, but we want to make sure that that does not happen. There are many great cemeteries in town and a lot of them have great leadership. In doing our research, because we sent out questionnaires to a lot of the groups, we're looking for, again, a line of succession to see who is actually grooming someone to take over from them. A lot of great volunteers that are out there mowing the lawns, taking care of these properties and the issue becomes that these folks are aging out. The age... The age of a lot of them in the committee is in their seventies or even older, so we wanna make sure that we've got those that are gonna be continued into the future. Again, the other issue is, as the mayor pointed out, we've attempted this in the past and the concern's always been that the cemeteries want to remain separate entities, because they each have a unique history and a unique ability in their ability to continue as a cemetery, whether it be through the church, whether center cemetery, through some of the line item gifts or provisions from the town to continue those cemeteries. We wanna make sure that we don't inhibit or step on any toes that way. We wanna make sure that this is a group where all the cemeteries come together and we get this separate entity set up where it's gonna be able to be used to raise monies for the rest of the cemeteries, not to use it necessarily as an operational line item, but for capital expenses. If there's a storm like we had recently where some trees might fall, cause some damage to some of the headstones, or even, it sounds strange, but some of the cemeteries might be in a situation where some of the headstones have fallen, have been covered, and they don't really know where people are interred. So we wanna make sure that we can protect not only the future of our cemeteries, but to actually preserve the history of who is indeed there and how many people are there. There are a lot of interesting folks that are in our cemeteries and I think, you know, thinking of as a historical person, I love to come in and see what's going on in the different cemeteries. I know many of you probably don't think that's exciting, but to see who is in certain cemeteries really is exciting. We've got some great people in some of our cemeteries, so we're looking to work to get that to carry on. Not that it'll be a destination point, but there are some people that wanna come in and see for genealogy purposes. We do get a lot of folks that come into the probate court and they'll ask, well, in our records, where would this person be interred? So we've got a list of the cemeteries where they might be buried and they can go and look and then see where the cemeteries are. And we do have some of the cemetery folks here, thank you for coming out. It's very nice, because they're very friendly, very excited about their cemeteries and we wanna make sure that they're aware that we're not taking over from them. We wanna make sure that we can continue their legacy and their stewardship forward, so that we have all these separate and unique cemeteries in our community. So what we're looking at, as I talked to the mayor about, is trying to set up an umbrella, sort of a corporation, sort of like a friends of the cemetery or cemetery organization where monies can come into that group and then the cemeteries themselves can go to this group and ask for some monies from that entity, because a lot of the cemeteries themselves do do some fundraising for themselves. So we wanna have this as perhaps in addition to a fundraising mechanism for a lot of the cemeteries in our community. And we think that that's something that we can work with. We've had some interesting ideas to try to entice some folks to be more free in donating to certain things, so we're just gonna try to get people excited in cemeteries, but that'll be my job, I guess, so. Are there any questions or...
Any questions for Judge? Doug?
Interesting, Maria, how many cemeteries are in Milford?
I think with our count, we have, what, fifteen cemeteries? And there's a few that are, some of them are operational, some of them are not, and some of them were just being cared for by concerned citizens.
I know some smaller ones up in the upper part of Milford.
Correct, right.
I don't know if they're family-oriented, kind of the smaller...
Right, some of them are very small or smaller.
Right.
And, you know, we're trying to make sure we can save those or protect them. A cemetery's gonna stay there forever.
Right.
But some can get overrun, so we wanna make sure that that doesn't happen. So that's been the one concern that we've had, is trying to figure out who is in charge of the cemetery.
Right.
We've had people that were just mowing the lawn because they had made a promise of someone that they'd continue mowing the lawn. They had nothing to do with the cemetery, just they took on that charge and somebody had said to them, would you carry on this charge that I've been doing for a long time? And this fellow took up the mantle and has continued to do that to this day.
Any other questions for Judge? So we can't thank the sexton. We cannot thank the men and women that really do the work of the cemeteries, each and every one. So, you know, you really don't really think about them until you need to, but we really can't thank them enough. And we're gonna apprise the council again to let you know how we're making out, but I just thought that you, the council, should know, first of all, the need, and second, what we're doing to kind of come up with a solution. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Next is the town facilities utilization subcommittee, and I know Chairman Pooter's here tonight. And again, this is one of our subcommittees that we put together and they are to study our buildings, see how we can use them to their maximization. And Chairman Pooter?
Good evening. I've got a couple of copies of this for you. Actually here, there are actually several members of the committee here, Alex Anello, Chris Tadico, and Steve Confortini in the back. They've been really instrumental in moving this forward. I wanted to, we wanted to give you an update on where we are in the process and more importantly, get some feedback from you about, I guess we're wrapping up some of our inventory phase now, and wanted to get some feedback from you on the expectations that the council has for what we're planning on presenting to you in a month and a half or so. To date, what we've done is really focus on, oh, do you need another copy?
Yeah. Don't you need one?
No. Sorry. No problem. So what we've started with is an inventory of all the buildings. The first thing we did is put together a questionnaire to distribute to all the department heads in the town and get feedback from them on what's working, what's not working for them spatially in the buildings. We have twenty-seven of those responses back so far, and I will get you a copy of that form. We've also met with the director of public works and facilities department and also several other departments during this. They've come to our meetings, we've met them on building sites, they've given us tours of their facilities. That's really, I think, one of the best ways to kind of understand the operation of the building is to be there when you have somebody who is working on the building or working in the building, so we're gonna continue to do that. We have a few more meetings set up this week, actually. We'll be up at Sullivan Farm in a couple of days and we'll be continuing to tour those buildings. We looked at several different data sources, first of all, to find out how many buildings the town owns. And then when we went to some of these sites, we realized that there were smaller buildings that might not necessarily have been included on the assessors list. So right now, where it stands, we think we own forty-four individual buildings. And some of those are really small, but we felt it was important, you know, if we're at Lynn Demming Park, you know, we have a new facilities building there, but there's also a small little shack on the waterfront, a shed really, that the lifeguards use. And there's another one that they use on the waterfront to store equipment. And then we felt that to really understand how these facilities are being used and how they're operating, we need to know any indoor space that they had that they were using. So your recycling center has a couple of, you know, plastic recycled sheds that they're using, but they're important parts of their operation, so we want to inventory that and document what they have. So right now, it looks like we have about forty-four. We've inspected thirty-two of those, that's about seventy-two percent. The target is to wrap up the inventory by the end of the month. I think we'll be at Sullivan Farm later this week, as I said, I think there's four or five there alone, so that's a, that's a third of what we still have to do. And I don't think we have any problem with that. And really, the nuts and bolts of this is what we're doing is putting together a matrix and a series of spreadsheets where we can evaluate and analyze all the buildings, look at everything at the same time. We can see how many dollars per square foot the building costs to operate, what the projected capital expenditures are, how many people are in the building, how many square feet per person, you know, how many dollars per square foot in terms of utility costs and maintenance costs and things like that. So that's where we're kind of at right now. Really, the goal is to find where we have overlaps or deficiencies or an opportunity for increased efficiency. So the next step is, we wanna wrap up the inventory. We really wanna look at the operation efficiency, operational efficiency, and this is where I think, as a committee, we would like some input from you, just to make sure that this is what information is gonna be useful to you in decision-making. So we're looking at operating costs per building and per complex. So as I said, there are five or six separate buildings at Lynn Demming, so we're gonna look at those individually if we can and then in aggregate. We wanna look at that broken down by square footage. I think one of the really important things that's, I think, harder to quantify, it's maybe more of a qualitative issue, is responding to and compiling all the comments from the different department heads about what they see as something that's wrong with the building that they're in or what they need. That's more of a qualitative issue, but again, we, you know, we wanna put that documentation together. The deficiencies that we see or that they have identified, if there are any limitations to more intensive use, you know, we have several buildings, we have a lot of old buildings in the town in Milford, we own a lot of historical properties. The MACS, for example, has a deed restriction on use. East Street School has historical features that we have received documentation from that are, you know, irreplaceable. So, you know, anything like that that's gonna limit potential use of the building, we want you to know about it and have it compiled in one document. Any maintenance or capital projects that we can identify, we're gonna put that together and report. And then we're gonna look at, you know, again, the assessed value, if we have an appraisal, we'll look at appraisal too, but not a lot of the buildings have been recently appraised. So what we're thinking is we'll look at assessed value per square foot and break that down. So then again, you have a way of comparing, you have a spreadsheet and you can compare and sort how expensive or inexpensive a building is to operate. And the target date for what we're gonna get you is August thirteenth, I think we end on that date or shortly thereafter. So the goal is to stay on time and give you something that's usable, but I think we're really looking for feedback on what you need from us in addition to what we're thinking here.
Katie?
Wonderful job for you and your committee. Great. You got twenty-seven responses back. How many did you send?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that question.
So it's not, you don't think it's...
I think we got, are we pretty close? Sure?
We just asked the peace office to send to all departments. I'm not sure how many they sent out, but I just know we got twenty-seven back.
Oh, okay.
We'll let you know who's delinquent.
Do you think you have gotten one on just about every area?
I think it's pretty close.
I'd like to know if not.
Okay, we'll get you that number.
Great job.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, that was also my question. Thank you, Katie. Nick, great job.
Thank you. Well, the group, not me.
In the committee. Terrific idea to make efficiencies, is always my big thing. What was the biggest surprise that you saw out there, whether it was positive or negative? What were you just, what was a wow to you?
I think the wow to me is that, there are a couple. One is that we do have a lot of old buildings that have historic value and maybe, you know, could be used for something else. One of the really common comments that people have said during these interviews is the need for storage space. That's just almost everywhere we've been, I think, people have said they need more storage for file space. And so that's, you know, is there a way to figure out how much storage space we're talking about and then is there another way of serving that need?
Get rid of the paper.
Get rid of paper, right. So that was a big one. And then, you know, when you start going down through buildings, you find, I mean, you know, the obvious, like, I think we've all, most of us have been through Pettibone already, so we knew that, you know, a third of the building isn't used at all right now. So there's a lot of vacancy, a tremendous amount of vacancy in that building. We knew that upstairs in East Street School was also vacant, but, you know, there are little rooms down in the stage area of East Street School that, you know, you're looking around, there's some big space there and maybe there's some opportunities in that. So there's a couple downstairs here also.
Nick?
The facility that I think is the park, I think, or the town, across from Staples is a commercial building. Do we own or lease that?
We own it.
We own that? Okay. I didn't know if that was included.
Is that the one, like, you, were you in that?
Yeah, I left a message for the park today to get a...
Okay.
That was one of the...
That's one to do still.
Right.
And then, other than the...
Is the judge still here?
No.
So we need to get into, we wanted to let them get settled in at the probate court before we bug them.
Thank you very much, both in the committee and for your leadership. Do you have in, because you mentioned old buildings, so do you have a qualitative measure in your spreadsheet of comfort? Because, you know, sometimes HVAC is not great, so if you had that on each building, it might be helpful then as people are evaluating, do I want to move into or out of and move things around, number one. And number two, did you talk to or on the questionnaire, did you have anything about future growth?
I'm sorry?
Did you have anything about future growth? Like, if I've got ten staff today, do I think I might have fifteen staff tomorrow? So the metric today might not be where I need tomorrow.
We do have that on the survey, yes. That's a specific question on the survey.
Thank you.
Any other...
And we had it listed as future department needs for a three to five-year window.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions?
Anything else you want?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, you're in the committee. Outstanding work. Thank you, sir. Next, we're doing the nonprofit subcommittee. So Katie sits on there as well as myself, Mike does as well. Kind of wanna update the town council as well. Katie, would you like to...
Sure.
Talk to the council?
We're almost completed. We have, we're down to final drafts of, we started with the basics, the mission of the subcommittee, then we moved into criteria for nonprofit funding consideration, then we developed a grant application, and then a guidelines for conflict of interest and confidentiality policy, because there wasn't any such thing. And dealing with funding nonprofits in a town where we have such a high number of people who are involved in volunteering, a conflict of interest is extremely important. Last thing we got done to a final, pretty much a final draft, is an annual funding affiliation agreement, calling some of these people that may be funded partners or agencies. The terms just sort of didn't fit, so an affiliate is where we're at right now. Our next step, hopefully should be right towards the end of what we're doing, is we're sending all our final drafts to the town attorney to go through it and then fine-tune that, review the exclusions. We have some regional things like Lake Lilinoa, the Candlewood Lake Association, that are not a line item, they're excluded, so we wanna go through that with finance to make sure we have everything. And then we're down to the guidelines for the actual, I don't wanna call them guidelines, the last thing we have to do is the committee that, the volunteer committees, something to give them some identification.
And kind of just refresh the memory of the council, so when we went through our budgetary process, one of the thought processes was, was how do you pick nonprofit A, nonprofit B? Is there an actual process? And we uncovered, as we sat here, we really do not. So the thought process was, we put together an application, we put together a process, so now the nonprofits will know when they come to ask for grant monies, if they are available, that's a big if, and that's gonna be decided by the town council, and the process in place that it's going to be a committee, setup of individuals that will take a look at these applications, go through the process, go through the guideline, tell the town council which they feel, because the council has the ultimate authority, which nonprofits should be funded in that year, which ones should not. We will be looking at their financials, looking at their process of how they do their business so that the townspeople and you, the council and board of finance, can get a better understanding of it. I know Walter also sits on there as well, and I really can't thank the committee for doing yeoman's work like they've done so far. I don't know if Walter, you had anything you wanted to say more about it or...
You and Katie took a card.
Okay. Mike, you have anything to say on it?
I think since some of them are here, they should probably know that the committee is going to move an application deadline of October first.
Perfect. Any questions?
Yes, are there gonna be measurements?
Yes.
Yes.
That was quick.
Yes. Maybe I should just, I'll just paraphrase some of this. To be considered in the first place... To be considered, in the first place, the applicant would have to provide a necessary service that benefits the residents of our community by augmenting an existing service provided by the town and its departments, or by providing a necessary service not currently provided by New Milford Town Departments. They'd have to have proof of financial things to show us. But basically, it's a matter of the value to our community, and that value can be weighed in many ways. I mean, there are dire circumstances that can up somebody's value, but, so we've gone through and come up with some guidelines and an application that is pretty stringent. And then in the process, if they were, someone were to be funded, they are going to have to do midterm reports. These are annual funds, it's not going to go past that. They'll have to provide, you know, where are you, depending on who it is and what their service is to the community, we would, that's one of the things we have left to do, is to say, you know, should you update us? They have, part of it is they must come to the council. Funding can be removed or affected if they do not come to present, if they don't keep up.
So it could also, it could be services or products, so, or something that's needed, like the fire department may need training, so that might be A, or B, they might need the material.
If it's a necessary service not currently provided, or they're augmenting a service that is under provided. In a lot of research I did, there are towns who found in doing this sort of thing, that what they did that was more fiscally efficient, and probably just efficient overall, was they had a department who was serving a need in the community, but underserving it, not for wanting to do it that way, but for lack of understanding, because a town department is, a town department, collaborating with a nonprofit, they saw that there were areas where they could do some of that, under the guise of the department. So it's a learning process as well, for most towns that have done this, and it's, but I will tell you that it is a very sticky wicket for, when you get down to the actual funding. In all towns, cities, they do it differently, and again, as the mayor said, it's a matter of if there's any money. I mean, this is a lot of, a lot of work and research to, hopefully we'll be in a position to have that, to, and if not, it'll be sitting there waiting, so.
Thank you to you and the committee.
Lisa?
Yeah, that's all I wanted to add. Thank you so much for your hard work and your expertise and lending that expertise with all of your background, United Way, and all the background work and benchmarking.
Very collaborative. We had Sharon Ward, and Walter O'Connor, and Mike Sinello, yourself, and Cameron Mirkani, who's CPA. So we've kind of covered them all.
Just a quick question, what Mike said. So for them to file for a grant, they have to file it by October 1st?
Application has to be returned to.
Be returned by October 1st for their fiscal year.
So we're going to be bringing this back to the council, probably the next council meeting, or the meeting after, I believe, the next one. I'll have it formulated, bring it back, get your approval, so that there's plenty of time for these nonprofits to get their information together to the committee that will be set up to review these.
So you're going to send, you're going to bring up the application form for review?
Correct.
That I was going to have done.
And that will be the deadline, and then from there, we can find out financials or whether it's applied for?
That'll be the subcommittee that will be set up to review that.
Okay.
But everything ultimately comes back to the council.
Yep, everything ultimately comes back to your budget.
We've discussed this, that if someone were chosen, which is why the conflict of interest was very important, if, you know, if the committee determines that A, B, and C are their recommendations for funding, and the council says, we're not crazy for A, but did you look at this one over here? No, then that committee has to do that due diligence there, too.
Any other questions?
It's very transparent.
Thank you. Walter?
Just like giving out scholarships.
Yes.
The tough part is, who gets the scholarship?
That's the tough part. Who's more deserving?
Right.
I don't envy that company at all.
And like scholarships, there's a lot of things that go into it. You know, you're acumen scholastically, do you get involved, do you play sports, do you volunteer in your committee?
Right.
You know, do you, what are your plans for your future and?
Financial.
Yes, and of course.
We have a nonprofit that comes here and has a $4 million.
Well, yes.
Kitty, someone that does.
Yes. We have a sliding scale on how much evidence has to be provided on your financials based upon your net value, so.
So we're bringing all that back, and just wanted to update the council where we're at so far.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Next, senior center. Katie?
I'd like to move to accept a donation of three air conditioners to be used at the senior center, two valued at approximately $150 each, and one valued at approximately $300.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tax collector?
Move to accept tax collector report refunds for June 2018 in the amount of $536.02, which leaves a balance of $1,265.31.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to the ordinances, that we had our public hearing this afternoon or this evening.
11A, move to repeal ordinance, Chapter 2, Article 11, New England New Year Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item B, move to repeal ordinance, Chapter 2, Article 18, Ambulance Facility Building Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is charter revision, as we had our public hearing earlier this evening, which was at 6:00 PM. The public was able to give input, if they so chose, on charter revision. The town council pursuant to the ground rules of how we do charter revision, have an opportunity at this meeting to provide any feedback as it pertains to charter revision so far. Do any council members have any feedback this evening?
Just a couple things. I think it's a great idea to have the budget separated. So if one is passed, whether it's the town or the Board of Ed, that sticks. And then the second time, that if it doesn't pass, then that's the only one that should be, because obviously we've spent a bunch of money in the last three referendums, and I think that we can do better. So I'm all for that.
Excellent. Any other discussion as it pertains to the charter? Okay. Thank you. Next, I'd like to move next to Perry Drive.
Item 13, move to renew listing of 82 Perry Drive, New Milford, Connecticut, with Diana Newbert of William Raveus Real Estate.
Second. Thank you. As you can see in your packets, I had asked Diana for kind of an update. This is a lot. This is land, so it's not a house, so to speak, so she talked about she was able to get some people to look at it. Thought there was one offer, the offer never came through. She has been showing listings, so I think it warrants the opportunity for renewal of a listing. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Is this, Mayor, has this been reduced, or is it just to carry on?
It's just to carry.
Just to carry on.
Okay.
So we've started this June 5th of 2017?
Correct.
So we're like in our third six-month cycle typically, so it's a six-month listing?
Correct. If you've seen this property, the land?
I know.
You know exactly where it is. Very challenging.
Is it one of those things that, if this person is local?
Yes.
William Raveus, is it the one on Bank Street?
Yes.
Can we do just the question, is there somebody that might be able to push it faster, quicker, to get it off our books, or?
I would think you'd give this person another, an opportunity, and then if that doesn't happen, look at either reduction, and trying someone else out, or one of the other.
So you want to do another six month for her?
There's been interest.
Yeah, there's been some interest, that's why.
That's why it came up.
As you can see, there was an email that was in your packet, where she shows that she did have some interest.
But not enough interest to buy it.
Correct.
Almost there.
Almost there.
Almost.
Still listed at 45.
Yes, sir.
Do we know what the offer was at?
All those have never, the offer never materialized.
They weren't, just looking around.
But she's not recommending a reduction price at this time?
No.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, personnel.
Move to accept the updated job description for Economic Development Director that was created through HR and the Job Description Subcommittee.
And if Lisa and Katie could?
Do we have a second?
Talk, we have a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
And we have Greg. Greg, can you come up?
So basically, the council, in their budget, added this personnel line, which is for the Economic Development Director, and upgraded the job description and titles for this particular job. And Greg, if you could kind of give the council a little bit of an overview, and then Katie and Lisa, who are on the subcommittee, also can give us some brief highlights as well.
Absolutely. So the subcommittee took a look at the existing job description that we had, and we all did a tremendous amount of work on this. We looked at all the other municipalities, what their job descriptions were. Lisa also has a contact with a firm that really focuses on business development and economic development, and we got some great feedback there. This job description essentially has been completely rewritten. I think one of the only points that we kept was along the lines of the education line. Everything else has pretty much been completely reimagined. It looked at what we're facing here in New Milford, what some of our goals are in terms of economic development, whether we're going to be looking at small business, whether we're looking at commercialized business, and the type of contacts that this person is going to even need, and the type of relationships. So this job description really highlights a lot of that, and I think, you know, both Lisa and Katie, a tremendous amount of work went into this job description.
Greg, is this the $150,000 position?
This is. This is. That's one of the reasons why the salary grade was left alone. Based on the personnel rules and regulations that was adopted last year, this is outside of the top step that we have. It's going to be the highest paid position in town, so that'll have to be looked at as well, and just adding that grade.
This was one of the problems there, because I had with the town side of the budget, even though I voted for, frankly, I would, my heart is saying, I'm opposed to this, but if it is the will of the council to do this.
Can I point out a couple of key items that lead into the salary level, that are fundamentally different from the previous job description?
Well, my concern was the amount of money.
I understand that. So if you talk to, if I may, if you talk to the caliber of individual we're trying to get, or something called a site?
I had no problem.
Okay.
I will go, in my heart.
You just don't like it?
I just didn't like it.
Okay.
I did not like the proposal.
Okay.
But I will go with the will, with the will we have.
Thank you.
The council.
So as a little background, benchmark this job description against comparable job descriptions and the caliber of individual that we'll bring. If you'll notice, on the second bullet point, we're actually putting in here, they're expected to bring in a net job creation of 75 to 100 jobs, and in addition, every five years, grow the capital investment in our community, $20 million. I thought it was a pretty big ask. I ran it past a consultants who actually specialize not at the municipal level, but at the state and city level, and they had no problem with this. So if you imagine this person being successful, bringing that many jobs and that much capital investment on a routine basis, not just a one-time thing, that's what the vision for this position is. To do that, to do that, they're going to need to be dialed into the site selector network, this is a network of consultants that know what industries you're shopping around, what are the companies, and has contacts already. So that's what we're paying for, is the expertise and the contacts to bring that to our community. And as I stated at our last meeting, if this person doesn't deliver, I'll be the first one to say that, you know, we should not continue. But if you look at the language in the prior job description, there was coordinate, maintain, coordinate, as opposed to develop, implement, attract, propose and implement, strategic planning, facilitate quick evaluation, streamline our processes. It's a big ask, but so far, there's been no shy away from it.
Is there a time limit on this? Is it like per year that they have to do?
Yeah, per year, repetitive. 75 to 100 jobs per year, and over five years, 20 mil, every five years, 20 million in net capital investment growth.
Do you see that as realistic?
Again, I touched base with Jorkinson Consulting, and this is what they specialize in, and they said they had no problem, they could find a candidate that could do that. Probably not Connecticut, we would have to be early for reload.
How on earth can anybody create those kind of jobs and that kind of revenue?
The person?
In Connecticut?
Not revenue, capital investment. So imagine bringing in a data set with a high level of capital investment, or somebody that needs to create a manufacturing facility, that's 10 million. How a person would do that is you've got to bring somebody in that already has industry connections across the US, and knows the people that would then get them to move in.
So that's what we're paying for, like you said, is the?
That's why the high dollar item.
I got it.
This is no relation, no offense to any of the people who had this position before, it's really absolutely completely different than anyone we ever have experienced in this job. And there are people out there like this, that's why it's a high-priced job, but we ask, we will ask, a lot of this person, so it's, so many people have connections to things that you, they're not going to find this job in a Danbury paper, so.
I mean, Mike, as you say, some of the headwinds that they'll have to face, obviously, you have to face the Connecticut state climate, you have to face, you know, what kind of job industries that we can bring in, due to our high energy costs, due to our high personnel costs, costs of doing business.
But if the person has the connections?
But here's the beauty of New Milford.
It can be doing.
New Milford, and when you're looking at businesses that are in lower Westchester County, lower Fairfield County, looking in Manhattan areas, our cost of doing business is half there. Also, we have a great opportunity with Riverfront Revitalization, just got a $170,000 bar grant, to really look at how we're going to really, look at the dynamic of the downtown. So I think all these positives, with an opportunity to bring in an A player, I think really puts us at a great advantage, moving the town forward. Thank you. Doug?
No, I agree, we're starting for economic development here. We need to get a professional in here. We can't have somebody we just pay to shake hands and walk around town. We need to get a high-level person in here. I was talking to somebody today, and they're paying $18,000 for taxes in Richfield in the same place and the same amount of land that I have. So we have a lot of offer with taxes here to bring people in here, and I think a lot of people are starting to move up here because of the tax base. Not, I know we're going up 3 point something percent, but it has nothing to compare to where a same person in Richfield and stuff like that, so we need to get somebody in here that, the real deal, that can get some real economic development, because what we've had in the past really hasn't done much, so I agree, you know, you have to pay to get somebody in here, and it's a performance-based thing, so if they don't, if they don't do it, but I agree 100%, we need to get somebody in here, because we have so much to offer. We had a meeting with, trying to get a hotel in here, and a banquet hall in here. We've got water on both sides of this town that are beautiful. If we could get some, something like that to draw more people up here, I think it'd be a fantastic idea, so hopefully we'd get some of that up here as well. Much needed.
Any other?
I'll erase my hand hack with it.
Did I sell you, Walter?
Okay.
Any other discussion?
That's great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Next is the Community Center Subcommittee.
Right. Oh, you want to talk before I give the motion? Or you want?
Yes, if I could.
So, so.
So, so I was at the last Community Center Subcommittee. Mr. Winters was there, Mr. Mullen, Mr. Pooter was there, and there was thoughts, I got there a little bit late. Mullen, Mr. Pooter was there, and there was thoughts. I got there a little bit late. When I did get there, the discussion was concerning doing a survey. And how we go about doing the survey, how the survey would, it would be really doing a sample survey for how New Milford is set up, as far as a community, both with our seniors, our children. How would we go about really getting a real sense of what the public would want? In speaking with the committee members that were there, they were talking about how they would go about doing it, some of the impacts, and some of the, some of the headwinds that they would have in doing that, especially being a volunteer committee. So, I had asked the Chair, Ms. Legori, and the members that were there that night, if I could bring back to the council an opportunity for the council to provide assistance, financial assistance, when it comes to really doing a true third-party survey to the residents of New Milford in a professional way. So, I kind of wanted to bring that question, pose that question to the council, to kind of get your sense of is that's how you would like to move forward with something like that? Doesn't have to be, we're not setting up how that's going to be today. I think that needs a lot of input, but I just wanted to get a sense that I could relay back to the Chairman, Ms. Legori, Vice Chairman here now is Mr. Winters, he's here tonight, so that they can get a sense of what the council's thought process is with helping out and doing this with a third-party vendor, so to speak, that can help with that. Does anybody have any?
I do.
Yep. Katie?
I think before we talk about this or make a vote on this, the first thing, we talk about the charge of the Community Center Subcommittee. My understanding, if I'm remembering correctly, Jeff, somebody can tell me, that the idea was to talk about what a community center should look like, could look like, whatever, not focusing on the fact that we absolutely have to have one, but what it would be like should we have one. And if we were to have one, then the next step might be to say, where is it? Because I have to be honest, I'm not the only person who knows this, is that many people in this town believe that there's only one place to have it, we have to have it, and there's only one place to have it. And I'm not saying I have an opinion one way or the other on that, but I would just want to say, if we're going to spend any money, we've already had volunteers spend their time and efforts, I think we have to be sure that whoever we bring in understands that there's no preconceived notion. We didn't have a community center since the one across the street, I don't know how many years ago. This has become, it got called a community center without really the town in force saying yes or no. It's being used as a municipal office center. So, I would like to really make sure that whomever we get to quote on doing this type of, of market research and surveying, understands that there, the bias has to be, you know, you've got to look through some of it to really get to the bottom. And those of us who are here, we all have it, can't help it. But I think that's an important thing, and you, Facilities Committee, I'm sure, could have input to that. But I would like, right now, if one of you could tell me, what was the mission or goal? Jeff, you would know.
Well, the, um, I had to drive my mother back to the airport after high school graduation, so. The charge really was to determine whether or not New Milford wants a community center. And if New Milford wants a community center, what would they like to see in the community center? So, it's very, you know, what you bring up is very important, because the Chair and I have tried to stress repeatedly throughout our meetings that it is not about the building, a building, what have you. That's not it. And believe me, it's hard to get that out of people's heads. When I say that, even members of the committee, they're all like, oh, we can do this and this and this. And we're like, no, 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 nope, can't do that. It's all about what the community needs. And the, we do actually have a committee, a subcommittee, called Outreach Committee, and they have actually, they put together a nine-question questionnaire that actually has already been started to be distributed. And the very first question is, does New Milford, or do you feel New Milford needs a community center? And then it goes on to ask what they might or might not like to see in such a, in such a community center. But definitely, we do not.
Does it reference a building? Yeah. I know it's impossible almost, I think, to get it out of.
Well, and I think that what you'll see, and especially as Nick has been working really hard on what other communities have as community centers, and what, what those things are, that the meaning of a community center is so many different things. And when we come and present next month, you'll see that, because again, a lot of, a lot of communities think that just a senior center is the community center. Some people that see the library and maybe social services and something else together in a building, that that's the community center. But you can also look at a YMCA as a community center, you know? So, you know, Mariel has a community center.
Right.
You know? So, it's many, it's many different things. And so, you know, I think that, you know, our charge really is, is okay, number one, do we want one? Which, actually, in the POCD, from 2000, most recent POCD, it was over 70% of the people in New Milford felt that they wanted a community center. So, in many ways, we almost feel like, okay, is the survey going to be somewhat redundant to that, to that? But I think that again, we need to.
The former POC?
The current, the current POCD, which was done in 2010.
Ten years.
But, you know, to be statistically valid, there's obviously turnover in the community, et cetera. So, I think that that's, that's what we wanted to test. And I would say, realistically, right now, if, the funding that we're looking for would be to make sure that what, the questions that we have out there are statistically valid, that we're actually sampling properly. And they can also help us put together a questionnaire, but we don't, I don't think we really need, and I can speak for the Chair on this, I don't know that we necessarily need a company to come in and do a full-blown effort, because our subcommittee has done a very solid job so far, yes.
How much are you looking for?
We, you know, we haven't even looked into that. And that's part of the thing, too, is that, you know, we've only, we were a committee that was established in January. We didn't meet until essentially the end of March was our first meeting. So, we're just trying to put together, first of all, what is, what is the general consensus, and then look at costs, not only of the, the cost of the survey, but just, you know, what, what, what the idea of the community center would ultimately cost. And Nick, for instance, is actually having us to put together those things.
You guys are coming next, next month?
Next month.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I got the survey today, in fact. Nine, it was nine questions or whatever?
Yes.
It was very easy to follow.
So, we should get, I think what we're going to get is a lot of good preliminary data out of that. And then if we want to dig deeper, that's where, you know, an outside consultant, I think, would, would really, you know, pay dividends.
I would love to hear the presentation prior to.
Oh, sure.
Any money.
Yeah. Well, and we appreciate the Mayor bringing it out, bringing this forward, because with 20-odd members that don't always show up, we haven't really had an official forum for a while. So, it's.
Thank you for your efforts, and the committee.
Jeff, I have just another question, because, you know, you've been here a while. In, when you start talking about market research and surveys to do with a specific thing like a community center, if and what, what about, we're talking about a riverfront, we have advisors, we're thinking way out of the box about using our riverfront to better advantage and bringing people into our downtown, talking about our southern corridor. I mean, is this something that, and I say this to the Mayor as well, that, you know, should be part of a market study for all the things that we have? And Lisa has her hand up, too, she probably thinks the same way.
No.
But I just, when I, I think about how much money it costs, whatever it is, whether it's reasonable or unreasonable, and then we end up with this isolated silo of data for a community center. And over here, we've got a larger silo for Riverfront, et cetera, et cetera. That's the only reason. I just wonder if you and your committee ever talked about McGilla.
We haven't really, no, we haven't. And I think part of the reason for that is that, you know, we're focused on what our, our, our charge is actually pretty narrow. And we're just, and you know, again, we've really only had about three-plus months to meet.
Yeah, I guess.
So, you know, it's been, you know, we're, we're at the point where we're still in the developmental stage, and we hope, we should have some pretty good stuff to bring to you next month.
Lisa?
So, you don't have an opinion on this. So, in front of us, we've got three big projects, if you will, who are company, right? We've got this project, violently important, could be somewhere between $5 and $15 million if you look at benchmarking. We've got the Bike and River Trail, we've got Riverfront. So, the first piece to me, from my background in market research, is you don't want to mix your market research. Because if you do, and you try to make it one-size-fits-all, you're not going to get good answers to the questions. So, the community-centered question and the potential target audience is different than the Bike and River Trail, because that's a different purpose, and the Riverfront Revitalization, which is more economic development as opposed to recreation or community center. So, I wouldn't mix those market research projects.
I just wonder if we asked, you know, we started with this because it was that big elephant in the town.
Yeah.
And I just wonder if, if we hadn't started there, and we were talking about market research to see who wants what in their community, where would we go?
You're going to get dilution and not good answers. I am, I am biased towards market research independent, because then you can't review the results. And this has been such a hot topic. Let's get some good results and have them non-refutable and do the best thing for the community. And the other thing to think about is conjoint analysis. So, conjoint analysis is a market research methodology where you mix features and benefits and price points. And it, there's really an art to doing that, and a professional can do that so much more efficiently than we can try and ourselves. And I appreciate the volunteers trying to do that. But I want to get some good quality out of this. So, I want statistical validity, I want qualitative and quantitative mixed, and, and do this the right way so we can feel good about the decision. That's what market research buys you.
Right.
You feel good about the decision. You take out the bias, and you move forward with the best investment.
So, if we hadn't started on this because of the elephant building in the town, and if we just forget that, and we ask the residents, what is, what is important to you? Now, it's impossible to wipe this out of their head, I know that, because we can't even discuss this without it coming up. But if you were to ask that, maybe, I guess, what I mean is that perhaps a study on something other than this. I don't know that if you gave the community residents a survey that asked you what really, just rank, what's most important to you if we were going to do something to make it, you know, an impact on the community? What do you see it being? Is it the water? Is it the lake? Is it the community center? I mean, I don't know. We've never done it that way.
So, a good market research firm would not just ask the open-ended questions?
No, I mean, we would ask that. We've never done that.
Oh, okay.
We know, we've had this committee formed because there was a group of people, well, who now reside, our municipal offices are over there, and a group of people who are really hell-bent to have something happen with that building, some on one way and some on the other.
So, to your point, yeah. So, to your point, you would take that out, and you would go down the quantitative path, which is a survey, and then you would numerically score that. But then you would augment that with some type of qualitative focus groups, interviews to dig down a little deeper.
Well, that's where I was kind of going, like we've done before.
But the open-ended question, if you ask any customer, what do you want in your next product, they'd say better quality, lower price. And that's not actionable. So, there's an art to, and there's a number four professional firm doing it. There's really an art to the question asking.
But it's the fact that, I'm not opposed to the people doing it. It's the thing that we're going to pay for on this one topic, rather than, I think, nobody's thinking about other things that might be more important.
I'm thinking about paying for all three. I want to see market research done on the Bike and River Trail, I want to see it done on this, and I want to see it done on Riverfront. Because those are three separate objectives and potentially three different demographics. And again, if you try to make it one-size-fits-all, you're not going to get necessarily clear feedback.
Right. Well, anyway.
Mike?
Can't we just nominate Lisa to be on that committee?
No, biased. Too much bias.
Yeah, see, that's.
But number two, but why can't we, some of these questions, can we add them to the ballot in November? Can we do that?
No, because you're not going to have necessarily a demographic that's going to represent.
No.
You know, you're going to have a certain block of seniors that you want to have respond, a certain block of people with kids.
We can't do two birds with one stone.
No, you wouldn't. They've done all this work, and look how hard it's been, all the time it's been. I can only imagine what would happen on ballot. But anyway, I guess we have a, we do have a motion.
Also on the ballot, I don't think they have.
I didn't make, I don't.
I disagree. I sort of disagree. I'm neutral. I really love it, and I just.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
So, tonight, it's just getting a sense from, from our Town Council, so Jeff can relay back to the committee, there's some committee members here. Do we feel that we need to explore further the opportunity in helping the subcommittee with a more extensive survey process?
Well, let's, here's a motion.
So that we can get.
That's where we're going, right?
If I can make a suggestion before your, before your motion, because, you know, I was, as I was racing back from Westchester Airport, I wanted to make sure that I got here in time. So, I was actually going through the live stream as you guys were going through this. And I think that Pete, well, anyone else at the table would know, that if Vin Nolan was still here, that Vin would say, this is a job to, by combining all these thoughts, that it would fit under the Economic Development Director. Because that person would take a solid look at the, you know, not just the economic benefits, but the quality of life benefits that also attract other businesses to town, things of that sort. So, I think that, you know, if you really want to, you know, first of all, if you're going to hire a high-caliber person, that person is going to be able to really take a look at the riverfront. They're going to be able to look at the community center, they're going to be able to look at the bike trail and say, okay, what, how should we prioritize? And that would just be my, my suggestion, that, that that person really would be able to give you the bang for your buck answer. And I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. So, I move to hire a firm, an outside firm, an unbiased firm, to conduct market research, including a survey of residents, taxpayers, and property owners as it pertains to the Community Center Subcommittee's charge.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I think it's preliminary. I don't think we should vote on this tonight. I think we should wait for the committee to come in front. I think we can wait a month. It's just my two cents. I'm not willing to part with any cash.
So, we're not parting with cash, and that's my understanding, but to suggest, and maybe get them to explore which market research firms might be a good match, then come to us. I'm trying to converge their six-month timeline with getting things done.
It just sounds like it's spending money.
So, if we say, yes, yes, please consider this, then they could come with some recommendations with their presentation, and then we could decide, and we'd hear what the different price tags are.
It's not costing the town any money tonight.
It's not costing the town any money tonight.
I'm being facetious.
I'm sorry.
But it just makes me nervous that, oh, let's have another, you know, study done for $190,000 bucks.
It should be between 30 and 50.
I think that we should amend then, because this is, truly says, hiring a firm, this is not, any, nothing is said in this motion, the way it's written here, that would indicate that we're asking this committee to consider what you just said.
To come forward with three recommendations on different firms.
Walter?
I'm a little bit confused here. Has a firm gone out to the public already?
Yes.
I'm with Mike then. Why can't we wait until that information is somehow rather consolidated and then brought back to?
Good question, Walter. The concern of the subcommittee, when I was there, was to validate the sampling. So, it went out today to just the, Josh Smith sent it out today from the Board.
So, that'd be parents.
So, that'd be parents. So, to do a, to do a proper survey, you have to get the proper sampling, and how does that sampling look like? And some of the obstacles with a volunteer group is trying to hit all of those segments to do it in, in, in a reasonable and fair process. It's a very, very heavy lift. So, their thoughts were, as I told them, I would bring this back to the council, is if you do it in a professional way, where you're going to have somebody that that's what they do, sample it with the true sampling of New Milford, bringing that back to the committee itself to review, it helps the process.
The survey went out from the Board of Ed to people who are parents. So, right there.
Also, like the library, they're down, it's all other counties.
Right. But I, yeah.
And I'm still with Mike, we're still talking about a number, but we don't know about that floating somewhere in the air.
So, do you, do you feel more, Lisa?
So, that's why my recommendation is to have them go find out how much it would cost and bring that back with their data.
I could live with that.
Okay.
I have a question. Is that what the committee said to you, they would do, they are willing to expend that effort?
Jeff?
Okay. No, I know you have trouble getting people to show up, so. Okay. So, the motion stands.
So, it'd be, I would then say no motion. I would just say.
You want to withdraw it?
I would withdraw that, and I would just say, we're giving the charge to the committee to come back and give us their recommendations and some costs with the market research.
Okay. Consider it withdrawn.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yes, I withdraw my second.
Perfect. Any, anything else when it comes to, okay, next, I'd like to go into, make a motion, someone could...
A move that the town council move into executive session concerning potential appointment of Mr. David Stannard as tax assessor, and we'd like to call in Greg Valero...
Kathy Conway.
And, oh, there you are, Kathy, Kathy Conway, who have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I move to remove, return to open council session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item seventeen on our agenda, move for the appointment of Mr. David Stannard as tax assessor for New Milford.
Second.
Okay, Dave, if you can come on out?
Katrina, you all right?
Hi there.
Hey.
How you doing? How are you? I wanna apply for that other job first.
Which other job is that?
The hundred and fifty thousand dollar one.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, would you have a town without an assessor?
Oh, you come with jokes, too. You come with jokes, too.
That's fine. Humor's everything.
And does, any of the, any of the council have questions?
Did we get a second on it?
David, yep, we got a second on it, right? Walter. Doug?
Hi, David, how are you? Doug Scolick, came highly recommended by both Greg and Kathy, sorry, Kathy. In your resume, you do a lot of reevaluations, correct? You've done some in the past. We have one coming up in 2020, so we're hoping that your experience could help offset some of the costs.
Oh, definitely. I'm just the type of guy, I've done eight, six revaluations in the state, and being part of, one way or another, these forty-seven towns, I've got to the point where I can't sit through a revaluation without doing my own analysis. So if I'm gonna do it anyway, I think maybe the end numbers will be, I'm gonna be comparing to, if you even went to a company, that I'm going to be just the way I am. I was first taught in this business in nineteen ninety by a company out east of East Haven, less than a municipal service. And their, his biggest thing was on the quality of data collection. So I am huge on data collection and doing, having a done record, especially antiques, I mean antique specials, and waterfront specials. To the, well, I helped out consultant-type companies as well, but Guilford is my, if you will, same thing as far as valuation goes, waterfront community type, like that pocketbook that sits down on our shores, it's the highest value town on our water, except for Greenwich, which I worked with on their rebuild in 2001. Forty-seven towns means if there was multiple jobs done for that town with the same company, which is a sign of they, they call you back, the town wants you back, it's about a relationship. And the town wants sometimes even that same supervisor to run the job. So that's what happens in so, so many rebuilds in so many towns, is one thing, but the true test I had was in Guilford as a real estate master appraiser. I found my niche somehow, I'm an artist with a right brain and a left eye, and I found my niche as far as when I started measuring houses in nineteen ninety in Tolliver, when I lived in West Haven. I had to go there every day, so distance didn't start to bother me, in fact, annoyed me when I had people under me and were complaining about driving to Woodstock every day. Well, there's no easy way to Woodstock, but it has to be done, so. I worked in Roxbury, Washington, done rebuild before the prior assessor in Washington, just Barbara retired, her last rebuild. There's a lot of memories that go back to the early days to nowadays. My first fourteen-year half of my career was spent in the rebuild company, and the person who took me under his wing, he taught us that when we value property, know you're going to court. Okay? And so that became ingrained in all the appraisers who had been data collectors, but now new ways of collecting data had to be changed, so that we'd come out with better values because of different things. So developing the manual for the company was one of my biggest things, from the analysis I did of people, which the interaction of the taxpayer and the, or the data collector or the assessor was a big matter. I'm a scouter, which I come from scout family, and the cemetery may be a use of community service for scouting, but anyway...
They do, we have an eagle group that does one of the small cemetery, but you could help get some more.
If you have scout day, I'll put my uniform on, and there you go.
One of the places, we've had to... Say, one of the, one of the qualifications, obviously, that you're a reevaluator, that sold a lot of the town council, because it's gonna be quite expensive, and anytime we can offset some of those expenses to save the town money, and so we're getting like a two-for-one package with the assessor and a reevaluator, so that helps. So that sold me on your application, so I appreciate it, thank you.
But why New Milford? Out of all the places that you could go?
You know, it was funny, I have applied in other places. I was called by the assessor prior to the posting of the job, saying I want you to apply in my town as my assistant, I want to do rebuild every year. Yesterday, I looked on our CWO site as far as opportunities and who's been selected for what towns, was Stratford, and who she picked, who they picked, I never even got a notice. So I was laid off in February. When you get to this point of, of that time period, when the state has, no longer has to, you know, increase in weeks, it's twenty-six weeks until you have a mortgage, you know, I saw this posted there for so long, New Milford, New Milford, I'm looking at the map, I'm looking at the map. Oh, Rockshire, you know, but, and Guilford is also, he's retired, okay? But New Milford, I had a sale, and I worked for the city of Milford, I always say, I should've never left Milford, well, here's the New Milford. I don't have to be fifteen, ten minutes from my house in order to do the job I wanna do for a town, because we do, as individuals, need that time to decompress some days, especially the assessor, to come decompress some days on that ride home. I'm an artist, I find, I need roads, when it comes spring, fall, winter, and spring on, and the technical pictures don't be painting, it's gonna be, painting's in there, anyway. I have a passion for real estate and values and making sure they're correct, especially my motto, I'll go through this and you'll understand why, my motto is, you treat every taxpayer, this is for a rebuild person, the guy who's going through the doors, or even the assessor going through the doors, or even coming to take counter for someone, you treat every taxpayer as if they're the CEO of that town, because you don't know who lives where, and who knows, I've already looked it up, all your houses, so, oh, really? But, and my slogan is, and it's very true, it's all from experience, believe me. My slogan is, when you ring the bell and knock that door, remember, you don't know what's going on in that person's life at that second, so if it's not convenient, it's not convenient.
No question.
Try to make an appointment.
Okay. Do you like to be called Dave, David, Mr. Stannard?
Dave, Mr. Stannard's my father.
Okay, Dave.
That's twenty-five years ago. He was a scout master in Mason in West Haven for many, many years.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay.
And when, when are you able to start?
Immediately, he said, July 2nd. And I am coming for a few hours already, Kathy, and then this week I will do the same for a couple of days, to, on my own, and do a cleaner transition.
Great, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Welcome to Milford.
Congratulations, welcome to the election, sir. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Thank you.